Good morning and welcome. It is September 26, 2023. I will call our Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We have a very busy agenda today. Some exciting things to do and people to see.
Places to go?
And places, well, hopefully not. We will begin this morning with our friend Pastor Blaine Albright from Christ Fellowship Church to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which this morning will be presented and led by our 4-H Club member. And then after that, we have some wonderful proclamations. So if you would all please stand. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Have a great day today, busy day. I'll be brief. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for the opportunity to come to you in prayer. Scripture reminds us in Philippians 4:6 that we're not to be anxious about anything but in everything by prayer and supplication. And with Thanksgiving, we're to let our requests be made known to you. And so we come to you now, knowing that you're great and you're over everything, but you're also personal and you're concerned with us, your creation that you love so much. And so we thank you for the promise in your word that tells us that when we draw close to you, that you will also draw close to us. Got to confess, I need your wisdom today. The Bible tells us that if we need wisdom, that we can ask you for it and you'll give it to us generously. And so I need your wisdom today to be a better husband and father and pastor and friend. I pray that we're all seeking and welcoming your guidance today as we speak and listen to each other. I pray that our words would be gracious and filled with humility as we speak and talk, even with people that we may disagree with or have conflict with. Help us to remember that every person has inherent value. Every person is made in your image. And so thank you for this beautiful county and in all of our leaders. Thank you for these commissioners and citizens that I believe are doing holy work by striving to be good stewards of this blessing we call Martin County. Again, God lead us so that we can see your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen.
David, afterwards, if you, they could stay and they could introduce themselves.
Good morning.
Come to the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Please introduce yourself. Tell us, you know, maybe what school you go to and...
My name is Bailey Burrier. I go to South Fork High School. I'm enrolled at IRC and I've been in 4-H for 10 years now, so...
Good. Thank you very much for coming. Let's meet the rest of the team.
So this is Rebecca Nolke. Rebecca is our Martin County 4-H Program Assistant. She's been on the job for just a couple of weeks now, already doing a great job. She comes from 4-H in St. Lucie County, so she's no stranger to the program. So really excited to have her.
Excellent.
And then Jennifer Pelham, our County Extension Director.
That's a familiar face. Well, thank you very much. And we have a proclamation, so please hang in there for a couple of minutes.
David, you didn't introduce yourself.
He's going to get to in a minute.
My name is David Hafner. I am the Martin County 4-H Agent. I was also a Martin County 4-H kid and a volunteer in the program for seven years before I became the agent. So I'm pretty excited now to be the agent.
That's a full circle life. Some housekeeping.
A lot of presets.
Yes. We have several presets this morning. We have a 9:05 public comment. We have a 9:30 a.m. legislative public hearing to consider adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment CPA 23-05, 6900 Southeast Ridgeway Terrace. We have 9:45 public hearing to consider adoption of amendment to the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning classification for CPA 23-05, 6900 Southeast Ridgeway Terrace. We have a 2 o'clock presentation of the draft impact fee study. We have a 3 o'clock public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance amending the false alarm reduction ordinance, Article 5, Chapter 111, general ordinance as Martin County Code. We have 5:05, which is the final fiscal year 2023-2024 budget public hearing, and 5:05 public comment. I've also added in this morning a brief presentation of, from the Martin County Fair Association, which has got a lot of exciting things happening that we wanted to share with everyone. So we'll be doing that as well. And... There's an additional item, too. Yes, yeah, I'm not done. We have an additional consent agenda item, request for approval of a settlement agreement and release of liability between PAWS JJBCR LLC, Doing Business as the Noble PAWS, and Delray Pet Life LLC and Martin County Case Number 23-CIV-14125-AMC. And we do have one consent poll, number 15, and that is because of voting conflict. So I'm going to separate out consent agenda item number 15. And with that, Commissioner Smith.
I would move the agenda with the additional item of consent item 16 and the request to poll item 15 from consent.
Thank you very much. Looking for a second. Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith for the agenda as presented except for consent number 15. Seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
I would move item 15, and I understand that somebody has to file their form.
Correct. Thank you. We have a conflict for voting, and I would hear from Commissioner Jenkins.
Okay, I've filled out my Form 8B. This is potentially with the company I own, special gain or loss for Jenkins Landscape Company. We do own roll-off trucks. This is not something we do as a, as our business model, but just for the sake of, God forbid, if it ever came up, it would be a conflict, so I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for consent agenda item number 15 by Commissioner Smith. Seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Jenkins abstaining. With that, let's get into some of the good news of the day. We have two or three different proclamations for you this morning, and the first one is declare 4-H Week in Martin County, Florida, and it will be professionally and beautifully presented by Ms. Laura Boprey. Ms. Boprey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country each year. National 4-H Week observed October 1st through the 7th this year, excuse me, showcases the incredible experiences that 4-H offers young people and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Martin County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And here to accept, we have obviously David Hafner and his crew. He is our youth development agent.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much for this proclamation. I think, I just want to lead with the most important point is that in 4-H, you'll see our 4-H projects at the Martin County Fair, statewide events, but it's not the projects that we're focusing on. It's the projects that are creating our future leaders who are our youth members that are in the 4-H program. That's really where the focus is. When I came to become the 4-H agent, I already had a lot of goals in my head, as had been in the organization for a while, so I hit the ground running. Even though I was new, I wasn't new. And so luckily and importantly, the 4-H members, especially our 4-H leader members, I asked them, what are your goals? What are things that you want to do? And we aligned perfectly. They basically told me two things that they really wanted. They wanted to go to statewide events and not have somebody say, where's Martin County? They wanted people to say, oh, I wish we were in Martin County. So that was number one, and that was one of my goals. And number two was to expand what we're already offering in 4-H. We have an incredible program already. You can see these kids at the Martin County Fair exhibiting their livestock and their arts and crafts and things like that. But there is also, there's just way more to 4-H than what we're currently offering. We now have a photography club coming online, working on a rifle club coming online. We're just looking for new opportunities, more leadership experiences. We're going to be doing a community pride project where we assess the needs in our community, get funding for that, and then meet that need. We're really looking to expand to the full potential of what 4-H is. And it's not me. It's kids like Bailey who are out there, who are taking the initiative to take that next step and really be leaders in our community. And you're going to see a lot more of them really soon. So I'm excited to be in the mix to help them with their potential.
Mr. Chair, just a, just a, a few years back during one of the fair openings, all the 4-H members that were there and the FFA kids that were there, we did a picture with them, and it was one of the most memorable kind of opportunities I had to the young person that was there. Every single one of them reached their hand out, shook my hand. They were incredibly professional. They were incredibly pleasant. It's just like the best kids you could ever possibly imagine, and it says a lot to what the program does and the leadership skills that it gives them. And so you all are doing a remarkable job. Bailey, congratulations for being part of it. It is absolutely, I think, one of the better things you can involve yourself in for life-changing, motivational opportunities for things to come. So good luck for you and thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next proclamation declaring Treasure Coast Day of Prayer in Martin County, Florida.
A national day of prayer has been part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and approved by the U.S. Congress in 1952 as a joint resolution. The Treasure Coast Day of Prayer was established by the Treasure Coast Christian Alliance and is observed on the 4th Thursday in September. The Alliance encourages residents of all faiths to celebrate the day in the way they find most profoundly meaningful. And here to accept from the Treasure Coast Christian Alliance, we have Sherri Way. Oh, there she is. I was looking to where you were.
I want to thank the County Board of Commissioners for issuing this proclamation. The Treasure Coast Christian Alliance has been around for a number of years, even before it came to the Treasure Coast, started with my husband while he was alive some 30 years ago, under a different name. It has been taken up again here in the Treasure Coast over the past eight years. What we do is we have a board of pastors, senior pastors, from throughout the Treasure Coast. We're always open to receiving information from pastors and leaders in our community. We incorporate the business leaders and the civic leaders to participate in all the things we do, always invited to the Christmas Proclamation Supper and to our prayer meetings and other venues that we open up. So I just want to thank you all, and I hope to see you at the Christmas Proclamation Supper on December 3rd. It is open to all of you to come, and we would be delighted to have you. And this prayer meeting is actually, because we're having it at the Fenn Center in Fort Pierce this year, we couldn't have the exact prayer meeting on the 4th Thursday of the month in September, so we are going to do this October 3rd in the evening at 6:00 p.m. And again, everyone is invited to join us. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you.
I have a not tall wife as well. I think she's a little taller than me.
Yeah, she needs, can you fix all?
I want to get the height.
One, two, three.
Our next proclamation is declaring September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Martin County, Florida.
The health, economic, and housing crisis has taken its toll with increases in suicidal ideation and deaths, substance use, household violence, food insecurity, and more. September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month with local organizations such as 211 Palm Beach Treasure Coast and Suncoast Mental Health Center helping those in need who are in a mental health or suicide crisis. And here to accept, we have Kelly Rogers from the Suncoast Mental Health Center, and I'm not sure if Chad got here, Chad Adcock from the 211 Palm Beach Treasure Coast. Is he here? Ah, come on up.
Everyone taller than you.
I'll try not to make Chad look bad. Thank you, Commissioners and guests. My name is Kelly Rogers, and I am the Marketing and Outreach Coordinator for Suncoast Mental Health Center. We are a leading mental and behavioral healthcare provider, and we are celebrating our 25 years this year in the community. It is my privilege and pleasure to join with other community partners such as 211 to accept this proclamation for Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. I am here today because conversations matter and we can save lives. With suicide ranking among the leading cause of death in the U.S., especially among teens and young adults, we must continue to advocate for prevention through conversation and education. More than 48,000 people die a year from suicide. That means every 11 minutes, someone takes their own life. 132 suicides a day. At Suncoast Mental Health Center, we are addressing the mental health crisis by bringing our services and support directly to the communities we serve. We offer client-focused, community-based, and family-centered healthcare in homes, schools, workplaces, our four locations, and by telehealth. Our dedicated team of professionals are passionate about helping others and working together to provide a holistic approach. We treat over 1,400 clients every month. We treat 300 here in Martin County, and we are in 15 of your schools. On behalf of the children, adults, and families we serve, it's my sincere thanks to all of you for joining in the community effort to raise public awareness and promote mental wellness and have those fearless conversations about suicide. So thank you for having us, and hopefully we will all continue to shed the light on this crisis.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you. My name is Chad Adcock. I am, I do the outreach for 211 on the Treasure Coast, and 211 is the crisis line and helpline in this area. And I want to thank you for bringing attention to this matter that unfortunately is still very prevalent in our community. And in fact, we know that the CDC just released the numbers for 2022, and we're at a higher suicide rate than has ever been in this country right now. So it's important to keep in mind that the mental health struggles are real and that everyone out there is dealing with that, and to know that you're not alone. Sometimes there's this misconception that you shouldn't even talk about suicide because if you talk about it, then you're going to push people over the edge and they're going to do it. And study after study shows that that's not the case at all. Talking about it and having those difficult conversations is what saves lives. So it's important to talk about it, and I appreciate all the help that all of our partners at Suncoast and others do, and to know that you're not alone. And anybody that is struggling right now can have a free conversation just by dialing 211 at any point, and know that it's confidential. So thank you.
I was going to say, do I just be in the middle? Different kind of camera. Oh, we're broad picture. All right, let's do a couple pictures. One, two, three. One, two, three. Let's do it this way. Do I get a picture? One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Our next proclamation is declaring Careers in Construction Month in Martin County, Florida.
Careers in Construction Month is an annual observance designated to increase public awareness and appreciation of construction craft professionals and the entire construction workforce. October 2023 is Careers in Construction Month, and the Board urges residents to join in recognizing the value of construction craft professionals and the critical role they play in the development of our community. And here to accept, we have Nikki Norton, President of the Treasure Coast Builders Association.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for recognizing this industry. I think it's one of the most important industries in this county of Treasure Coast in general. We're honored to be a part of that. I'm honored to be their current president at the moment, and thank you for your support in this month. Thank you.
Ronnie Kirchman, Kirchman Construction. We've been in business in Martin County since 1971, past president of the Treasure Coast Builders Association. And I'm proud to just say, my daughter works for me for the past 18 years, and she just obtained her GC license recently. And she's also a product of the Martin County school system as well as I am, and thank you for this proclamation.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I'm Kevin Farrell with the Boys and Girls Club. We've been several years a part of the TCBA, and we're just about to start a skilled trades training in about three or four weeks, so we're really excited about that, to continue on. And we know it's really important to get our youth members engaged, and it's a great living, so we're really excited about that. Thanks.
Bob Zaccio, CEO of Project Lift, mental health and substance abuse treatment that uses the skilled trades as replacement behaviors. So pretty appropriate on the proclamations for today with suicide awareness and certainly mental health issues and all the amazing things that Matty Williams does and the TCBA and Nikki Norton. So congratulations on this proclamation today as well.
I like to put my members out in front, and I like to stay behind the curtain, but my name's Matty Williams, and I am the Director of the Treasure Coast Builders Association Charitable Fund. And our main focus going forward is educating the consumers, the young adults, on the great opportunities in the construction industry for employment, for entrepreneurship. And so thank you all for this recognition, and we certainly appreciate it.
Okay, before we present this, we need to vote to accept the proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week in Martin County, Florida. So I would entertain a motion. Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now we can present declaring Fire Prevention Week in Martin County, Florida.
Martin County fire rescue personnel are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, education, and community risk assessment. The Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to ensure our safety. In recognizing October 8th through the 14th as Fire Prevention Week, the Board commends the men and women of Martin County's Fire Prevention and Fire Rescue Divisions for their efforts to educate the public in fire prevention practices. And here to accept, we have Chief and our Fire Marshal Doug Colain.
Who is going to defer to a community risk reduction specialist, Josh.
All right. Come on up, Josh.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity, and thank you, Martin County, for this opportunity. It's my privilege to serve the county as the Community Risk Reduction Specialist for the Fire Prevention Division of the Fire Rescue Department. So Fire Prevention Week. The National Fire Protection Association declared the first national observance of Fire Prevention Week in 1922. Calvin Coolidge, President Calvin Coolidge, declared this a formal national public health observance in the year 1925, making Fire Prevention Week the longest national public health observance in our nation's history. So we're really proud that we get to be a part of that. In that capacity, we do spend a lot of time during Fire Prevention Week in Martin County schools from every grade level. But I would like the public to know that we are not limited to Fire Prevention Week. In the Fire Prevention Division, we do what we call public education events. Sometimes it is just myself with a group of scouts or an HOA. Sometimes it's an entire station. Sometimes it's in the community, at a church or a school. Sometimes it's at the station. We have a wide array of public education events that we schedule. This fiscal year, the Fire Prevention Division has conducted 141 said public ed events, or pub ed events, as we call them on our ops calendar, operations calendar, impacting 7,809 Martin County residents and students. So we talk a lot about fire prevention, fire safety. This year's Fire Prevention Week theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. So just a couple of notes on that. In 1921, the U.S. Fire Administration reported over 170,000 home fires. It's a little-known fact, everybody knows we do Fire Prevention Week during this time of year. It's a little-known fact why. This public observance is conducted during the week of October 9th to memorialize the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, during which time 250 souls perished and 17,500 structures were lost. 17,400, excuse me. So there's a reason why we talk about it every year, and it's to memorialize that disaster and to just, we have to keep reminding ourselves, despite all the fire protection code that we enforce in Martin County, and we work really diligently to do that, there are still structural fires, there are still accidents, and a lot of them are human nature, some of them are not, some of them are industrial accidents, acts of God. There's a lot of different reasons why we have these fires, but we have them, and we have more often than people would realize. So this year's theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, a lot of what we're talking about is cooking safety. I want to direct the public to the NFPA's website. It's www.nfpa.org, and they have a ton of resources for every age level and every ability level in a multitude of languages, discussing this year's theme. Tons of good resources for teachers, if you know any. I definitely disseminate all of this stuff through the Martin County School District via their safety administrator named Mark Coco, but I want the public to know they're free for everybody. You don't have to have any credentials to get them, and they have a lot of good stuff. What Community Connect is, is a portal that the public can use. It's a free, secured server where the public can register information for a given property, commercial property, residential property. It is, you're giving the responding captain and crew information that you want them to have on the way to your medical or fire emergency. For example, for structures, commercial structures, access might be an issue. If you don't want the fire department to destroy your door, you might say, hey, you know, I have a mobility impairment. The garage code to get into my home or my business is 1234. Or I have a grandmother living with us that has a mobility impairment. She can't be moved without her mobility device, what have you. I get calls all the time. I'm on a special medication. I keep it here. I can't figure out this website. Help me set it up. So I help them set it up, and the responding captain on a heads-up display on the way to that residential or commercial structure can see, okay, Mary cannot be moved without this medication. It is here. All this information is kept on a secure server. It is strictly for first responder use, and that is all. It doesn't ever go anywhere. It doesn't leave the fire rescue department. So that was it for me today. Thank you so much for this time, and Commissioner Campi?
Right here.
That's why he's a risk reduction specialist.
Are you going to do one?
We brought our own.
Three-year-old paparazzi.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate that. What we will do now is we'll take public comment, and then we're going to hear from our friends at the Fair Association. If you are not, some of you are new to this, so let me just explain, and there's a lot of request-to-speak forms here. If this first portion is general public comment, if you have something that you'd like to say about anything, even if it's not on the agenda, this is the time for that. Or if you want to say something about an agenda item, but you're not able to either stay until the item is heard, you can speak on that item now. I see some of you had filled in specifically. If not, if I call your name and you're not wanting to speak at this moment, just say later. And then also, I would tell you that if you do speak during the general public comment portion on a specific agenda item, later when we hear that item, you don't get a chance to speak again. There's not two opportunities for that, it's just the one. And the last thing I would tell you is that there is three minutes to make your comments. At the 2 minute and 45 second point, you'll hear a tone. That doesn't mean you have to stop, it just means that you have 15 seconds to sort of finalize your thoughts. Okay? And with that, I see these are the public hearing, public hearing. Ms. Joan Goodrich. Good morning, Ms. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Administrators, Counselors, and Members of the public. Joan Goodrich, Executive Director of the Business Development Board, Martin County's Economic Development Group, just here to speak to item, Department III item today relating to the initiation of an RFP process. This was initiated by Dyer's interest to renew their lease at Withham Field. I just wanted to speak to, again, the importance of the industry hub of excellence that this represents, our aviation aerospace industry. The average earnings for this hub of excellence for us in Martin County is an impressive 95,000 plus. The five-year projected industry job growth for this industry for us, that's been rooted here for decades, is over 17%. And so, again, I'm just here to ask for your support and approval of moving this item forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One moment, please, Ms. Goodrich. Commissioner Heatherington.
Joan, I wanted to say you have a hidden talent. You are some phenomenal dancer. You were rocking that stage at Lyric on Saturday night for Healthy Start. Amazing job. You did fantastic job, really great show, and you raised a lot of money, so congratulations. I had no idea you were such a dancer.
Want to do a little, some of your numbers?
Absolutely not, but thank you.
Well, it's song and a dance.
Unfortunately, I didn't take home the mirror ball like others on the dais have done, so.
Did a phenomenal job.
But thank you.
Good for you. Our next request to speak for him, and I'm also assuming an excellent dancer, is Mr. Tom Pine. Mr. Pine, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tom Pine. I've been a resident of Martin County for over 50 years. After all but getting booed at December 12th, 2023 budget meeting for your outrageous spending habits, here you are again using the consent agenda to hide $65,000 in legal fees paid to Noble Paw, one of two pet shops that sued the county over an ordinance barring the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits. This is not the end of the story. There'll be more payments required in the future to the second pet shop owner at a minimum. Using consent agenda in this manner is violating Florida's open sunshine laws protecting open government. At the last commission meeting, there was also talk of sewers being stalled in the Rio area. The one thing that was absent during this discussion was the cost. I guess since the cost is so high and stressful, the county commissioners aren't going to talk about that in public anymore, especially since it appears to be so much cheaper per household everywhere else in the state. The budget is now, for the first time, the elephant in the room. Over 100 taxpayers showed up for the first time in decades for the budget hearing, and generally speaking, no one was satisfied with the spending of our tax dollars. Several taxpayers were questioning why our Martin County government was operating so many businesses throughout the county, businesses that are generally operated by the private sector. All the businesses mentioned are operated by this park department, so the first thing we need is a new Parks Department head, one that understands how democracy works. Most of all the items mentioned in the budget hearing have been brought up before this county government over the past few years, including the outrageous, specifically the outrageous spending at our golf course, where I went to two counties, north and south of us, and observed their, especially their clubhouse. The bar and restaurant in Martin County is obscene. It's so expensive. I also talked about the outrageous garbage collection, recommending maybe the county look into doing our own garbage collection, as the city of Stewart has done for decades, at a much lower cost, of course. And the CDO of Cala does it, and they even have electric garbage trucks. But instead, we give waste management millions of dollars. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Mr. Pine, thank you very much. Our next request to speak for him is Sharon McGinnis. Sharon, I apologize, I didn't see your note to go first.
That's not a problem. Good morning, and thank you. I'm here to talk about the parking rates within the CRA, and I'd like to start out with an observation. I live in Port Salerno, Rocky Point, and when I go down to Manatee Park to have dinner, I always wait in line, right? So that says to me that there's enough parking for the patrons to frequent the restaurants that there are more than tables, right? I understand there's a need for parking in our area in Port Salerno, but my problem is that I have an understanding that the parking rates within the CRA were not completely accepted by everybody on the board. And so each of you have my contact information. I'd like you to spend some time to tell me why you're in support of such low parking rates within the CRA. I've heard about the comment of walkability. To me, walkability is interconnectivity, traffic control, and sidewalks. When you think about only allowing one parking space per townhome, then I see vehicles driving around the neighborhood trying to find someplace to park, and maybe even grabbing parking spaces that will reduce the amount of parking spaces allowed for patrons of businesses to our area. Our area is already cut off by bright line and a lot of train crossings to have additional parking constraints. To me, the only reason we've had such low parking rates in the CRA is that we have decided that we want to make it more economical for developers to develop. Don't talk to me about a sea of parking lots, okay? If you build a townhome, you have to give parking requirements for the people who are going to live there. Two- and three-bedroom townhomes with one parking space is unacceptable. Now, I know they can offset that by street parking, and I don't have a problem with street parking, but the point being is that some of the street parking needs to be there for businesses as well. So thank you for your time, and I really would appreciate if each of you will reach out to me and tell me why you did not want to make the parking rates more like they are in the standard areas of Martin County, and what we can do to have a discussion about increasing that, because I just feel that it's making it easier for developers and putting a really hard constraint on the people who live in these redevelopment areas. They are the heart of Martin County. They're where we started, and they're beautiful areas that need to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Our next request to speak for him is Mr. Jeff Whitman. Mr. Whitman, good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Whitman, Hope Sound. I get angry sometimes when I see all the habitat loss that has occurred in the last 50 years that I've been here, but it's hard to be angry when you're grateful, and I am so grateful for what we still have left. Martin County has so many endangered species that most people are not aware of. A black bear was spotted on 138th Street, the manatees in the Indian River, the Florida panther, which are still here. One of them's got a tracking collar on it. And the Asinima tetramera, the only, the four-pedal, also known as the four-pedal pawpaw. The only place in the world, entire world, that it is found is in Martin County, and has also been identified on the ham property. Speaking of the ham property, there are two people here in the chamber this morning who were in Senator Negren's office when he committed to fund, to buy the ham property to preserve it. And one of those, one of those people is on the dais this morning. Thank you Commissioner Hurd for your 20-year commitment for the preservation of the ham property. You were with me the whole time. Thank you so much. And thank you to Commissioner Jenkins for pulling us across the finish line. But with so much habitat loss, the remaining environmentally sensitive land must be preserved, but as Commissioner Jenkins said, it will cost millions of dollars. The only way that is possible is through a sales tax referendum. The Rural Lifestyle Amendment has made land much more expensive, and the people of Martin County probably won't support it unless the amendment is reduced in size and scope or rescinded. The future of Martin County depends on it. I don't think you realize how much damage has been done. A landowner is ready to sell 2,000 acres near the C44 reservoir for $4,000 an acre, it's probably serp land, to the South Florida Water Management District. You pass the Rural Lifestyle Amendment, and the owner withdrew because now he can get $10,000 an acre. Also, please do not, okay, the future of Martin County depends on what you do here. Also, please do not change the land use and zoning for the Ridgeway property. There are 800 people that live in Ridgeway, and it would have a negative adverse effect on their lifestyle if you do the land use change and the zoning change. So please respect the people and do not, please represent the people and do not represent the developer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Whitman was our last general public request to speak for him. If anyone else would like to speak during this time, or if your slip is here for, with an agenda item attached, and you'd like to speak now, now's your turn. Sir, are you? You had departmental number three. Do you want to speak now?
Yes.
Please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Josh Birmingham, and I represent three aviation companies that are headquartered at Stewart Withham Field. I'm here in support of the Department III agenda item in regards to the RFP for the nine acres. We are an organization that's been headquartered here at Stewart Withham Field for 10 years. We participated in the RFP approximately five years ago. I've read the prioritization of needs list, and again, just as it was five years ago, the aircraft component repair is the number one proposed priority item. There's also an incorrect statement in here that there is only one jet repair center at the airfield, and there's actually two. And there are two piston repair facilities at the field for a total of four repair stations. So I'm not sure how the repair station could be the number one priority on this RFP again. There are no areas or no flight departments on the airport. All of the land and facilities are owned and controlled by two FBOs, Atlantic Aviation and APP Jet Center. Both are corporately owned by corporations out of the New York area and do not have the space for our types of businesses. Flight Department is number two on the list, and we believe that it should be number one on the list as the highest priority for the airport. Currently, they state there is one teehanger development on the airfield, which does not constitute a flight department. We own and operate 17 turbine aircraft, and we employ approximately 130 employees. Our headquarters is here in Martin County, and we employ aircraft mechanics, pilots, human resources, accounting and financial employees as well, and we need space to, in order to stay here in Martin County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, with that, that's the last general request to, what, these? Those are the new ones. Can I have the old? No. Those. That was our last general request to speak for him. Anyone else looking to speak to us before we close this portion? Seeing none, we'll come back to the Commissioners. Commissioner Hurd?
I'm set.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'm good.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Good morning.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Casey Ingram-Mullen, our newest Martin County Fair Association manager, to come forward. She's going to give us a brief, brief presentation and update on what's happening out at the fair. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Commissioner Campi. I very much appreciate that you made some time here this morning for me to give you all an update on what's been going on with the fairgrounds. Funny enough that the 4-Hers were here this morning. Why did I get involved with this project? I was a 4-Her. I was there my entire life, or my entire youth, and it has life skills, and these kids work so hard all year long, and I'm just passionate about making sure they're able to have a great place to showcase their hard work for one week out of the year. So I'm going to run through this. I know you have a busy agenda. When I started on July 28th, I came with goals, and my board unanimously brought me on board, and they have backed me 100%. Fairgrounds cannot burden taxpayers in the future. It should be self-sustaining. It should generate enough revenue to employ staff, maintenance, a sinking fund for future repairs and maintenance, and should continue the support of community and nonprofits relying on us for assistance and aim to provide even larger scholarships for the children in the community or youth. Why do we need an Agriplex? The urban population is surging, leaving rural and agricultural areas behind. The world is changing, and the Agriplex will be where history is preserved and the future is unveiled. Igniting a passion for agriculture and urban youth is absolutely essential. Discovering the hidden wonders of farming has become a rarity. That's why the Agriplex is here, is to be an educational sanctuary that will cultivate appreciation and understanding. It's interesting, if you look here, the population in Martin County in 1960, when the fair started, was almost 17,000 people. As you can see, that the rural population is absolutely flatlined, and our urban population is steadily rising, and that's why we need a place like the Agriplex to continue the education of agriculture and the importance of it. I get asked, why not just move the fairgrounds the way it is? You have 11 acres, 84 acres, there's so much more. Sustainability. Today, we operate from fair to fair. We do not have a sinking fund. We operate on a shoestring budget relying on volunteers, and this is just, just this year, our insurance went up over 45%, over $50,000, and there's only one carrier available to us. We're very constrained at our present location with the severely aging infrastructure. If we can build our proposed model, we have sustainability. The additional request for land is for parking requirements. Even if we move for free with today's fair model, we would not generate enough revenue to sustain the facility. We do not want to come back and ask the money, more money from the county, which is ultimately our taxpayers. We need to set ourselves up with a successful business model that we can create large scholarships, offer more amenities to the community at large, and continue to assist our nonprofits like SPAM, United Way, Treasure Coast Food Bank. Today, we support 50 nonprofits. We can provide amenities Martin County does not currently offer. We can provide amenities that everyone can use for all ages, from all walks of life. A facility is truly the heart of all the community. My fair where I grew up, we hit an auction every weekend for the whole community would come. We celebrated our Fourth of July there, and it truly was the heart of the community. This new Agriplex fairgrounds, it'll have fairgrounds with parking, an amphitheater with 7,500 seats, equestrian facilities. Did you know that Florida is the third-largest equestrian ownership in the United States? An exposition, excuse me, an exposition hall. An exposition, excuse me, an exposition hall, 80,000 square feet. This is going to be absolutely phenomenal for Martin County and the entire Treasure Coast. Right now, our high school students have to go to another county just to go to prom. There's not a facility in the area that can house them. Conventions, meetings, graduations, it'll be absolutely a fantastic place. Agland Agricultural Heritage and showcase our future innovations. Motocross track. Interestingly, I've been speaking with South Florida Water Management District, and I didn't realize there's a huge issue with trespassing for four-wheelers motocross. There's no place for them to go again. I can't guarantee it's going to stop trespassers, of course, but now they're going to have a place they can go safely and operate their, their vehicles there. A new addition that is going to be a Farmer's Pavilion Locals Market, we're calling it a festival market, food court, indoor playground, and I'll go over that a little bit more here shortly. And one of the most important things I think that we can offer is a hurricane shelter and emergency response staging. There is no place right now for farmers to house their livestock, their horses, in the case of a hurricane, and we're going to offer hurricane-rated stalls. So that's going to be a huge asset for the community. So what changes have we made to the plan? I just mentioned it. It's going to be the Farmer's Pavilion Locals Market. It'll be open on weekends. It'll be a go-to for all of our locals to showcase and, and share their wares. The farmers can sell fruits, veggies, honey, meat, cheeses, even seafood, anything, you name it. Artisans, unique and crafted items reflecting the rich cultural heritage of our region and supporting our local arts. We envision 300 vendor spaces and four 10,000-square-foot climate-controlled spaces I'm going to call a pod. These spaces will house the refrigerated goods for the farmers. It'll have a food court and some entertainment, like a one-to-three-piece musician who can play some bluegrass or country music. So Dad can enjoy a cold beverage while Mom is out shopping at the, the market. So it'll be a lot of fun and a good draw, and it'll go hand-in-hand with not only our community, our agricultural community here in Martin County, but also the other amenities at the facility. One of the pods I want to dedicate for a children's playground, when I had my daughter, it was always hot. We had, had to worry about sunburns and even the equipment being hot afternoon thunderstorms. This will not only be a fun place for moms to take their children, but it'll be themed around the farm, so it'll be educational at the same time. And finally, this will be a rain-or-shine area because it'll all be under roof. It'll be open-air, but it'll be under roof. More changes that I've done since we've hired, and my board has 100% backed me, we've hired a feasibility and financial consultant. This was absolutely important with this project. DeVries Advisors, Ben DeVries, he has an MBA in economic and finance from the University of Pittsburgh. Projects he's worked on, part of them were nonprofits, which were very important, just like we are. John D. MacArthur Foundation, City of Riviera Beach, and the Treasure Coast Research Park. Ben said in cooperation with CapTech Engineering, we have completed our preliminary site plan and venue capacity review for Phase 1. The 128-acre site, yes, I'm hoping for more property, clearly meets the physical feasibility needs of the currently proposed venues and programs. We have now begun our survey of comparable use market rents, usage rates, and operating costs. We also hired financial expert, Commercial Mortgage LLC, many of you know Tim Mullen, who's sitting behind me if you have any questions. He has an MBA in finance from Johns Hopkins and the University of Pennsylvania. He's done financing for the Ritz-Carlton on South Beach, bonds for Port Antonio commercial loading docks, numerous Walgreens, all of these are on leased lands, just like the fair, as well as the Hyatt Grand Cayman and many others. Tim has said we've secured enough funds, thanks to our grants and construction revolver, to relocate to our new location immediately. This achievement is a result of a revised site plan and my expert budget analysis. With the support of our feasibility study expert and my 35 years of experience in construction financing, we are confident the new Agriplex will not only sustain itself, but also have enough operating capital to function year-round without relying on additional taxpayer assistance. So when can we move? We have the money to move. I know this is news, and this is exciting news. We do have the money to do, to move. How do we do this? We have remodeled the business structure, a lot of it centered around our locals market. We have also secured a line of credit with a local lender, and we've trimmed the budget in half. We're going to use engineered prefabbed offices and restrooms, and this is going to save us big, big money. This is what the schools do when they need extra classrooms. And folks, we can move now, and those plans are very easily and readily available, so we can hit our 50% plans very quickly. But again, we got to figure out our site plan. And what I mean by that, if you'll look here, the site plan, I wanted you to note all of the parking that is required. These, the layout here is not final. These are just here to let you know, these are the different functions that we envision here for our Agriplex. My feasibility expert has said, Casey, you're going to need about 50% of the land for parking. He's estimating about three people per car. Our big event of the year is the fair. So if you think you have 15,000 people a day, that's 5,000 spots right there for three people a car. And then, of course, we have our amphitheater and our exposition hall and all these other things, but the parking, I hate to say it, this is still an issue for us. And this, this additional land that we're looking for is going to greatly help us, as you can see, to locate the fair. In the upper right-hand corner, I also wanted to touch base on something else. You'll see an RV park up there. And with that, I want you to let you know that it is an ancillary use to the fair. So our vendors need it during fair week. We might have it for the exhibition hall if there's a three-day weekend event, somebody could stay there. Same thing with the amphitheater overnight. It's all going to be ancillary. It will not be for Grandma and Grandpa, or Mom and Dad, anybody to come down and snowbird there for the season, stay there for six months. It's ancillary and temporary. These are my counterparts across the state. All of them have RV parks at their fairgrounds, and you can see it's anywhere from 40 and Pasco to 500 in South Florida Fair. We're envisioning around 75, give or take, spaces. So why do we need more land? Parking, 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 parking. I know it sounds familiar, but I'm asking you today to please help us build it right this time around. We will be an asset not only to Martin County, but the entire Treasure Coast, but we need your help to ensure our success and sustainability. Where does the project stand today? We need to know our footprint to proceed. I've had two meetings with South Florida Water Management District Commissioner Campy, thank you, you were, you attended the first one with me. He understands a lot of the issues that we, we were faced with the fairgrounds through that meeting, and I appreciate your support. I also then went down and met with Drew Bartlett, the executive director, and it was very exciting because they are very much ready to engage with the county, if the county will engage with them, and they have thousands of acres around this parcel, and they want to put in walking and hiking trails. And they said, this would be a wonderful asset for us because we need parking and we need a trailhead. So this would be a fabulous collaboration between Martin County, the fair, and South Florida Water Management District. It's something we all can use together. So that, that was the conversations I had with them, and again, they are ready and willing to engage with the county. So what am I asking for today? I'm asking for you to stand with me today and help remove the obstacles that's preventing our progress. South Florida Water Management is open to collaboration with the county, and I believe together we can create exceptional amenities for Martin County that will benefit future generations. We appreciate the support we've received so far. That included the 84 acres already, as well as providing essential infrastructure that you have done. However, in order to offer these amenities and avoid parking issues that we currently face, we need this additional land. South Florida Management is eager to cooperate, and they will benefit with their facility as well with the walking and hiking trails and the trailhead. So I'm hoping today that we can work together to make this vision a reality. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Mullen, thank you very much. You're so articulate, you should probably have like a radio show or something.
Think about that, thank you.
Really professional.
Great idea.
A couple of quick things. One, thank you for the presentation, not only for my colleagues and our staff, but for the public that gets to see this, a lot of people. We talked about the fair for a long time, several years ago. Jay Spicer carried the weight of this new vision for a long time. I think the Fair Association was smart to, to pick you, to now take the lead. They get a two-for-one with Tim, who comes along with the package deal, like you mentioned, so I think that's important. I feel renewed and re-energized that we're close now.
Yeah.
And not the boy who cried wolf anymore or anything like that. I mean, you know, to Jay's defense, there was a global pandemic and some other things that sort of swept away some of his opportunities. The other thing that you didn't mention, that I know a lot of people would see as a huge benefit in association with the fair, is the possibility during hurricane and storm season to not only bring out our residents that can store things, boats or RVs or our key equipment, the sheriff's key equipment, that we don't necessarily have fortified locations to store during an emergency. We also have the ability, a lot of us have had the opportunity to see FPL mobilize at our airport, and then they can do, I spoke to a couple of my friends at FPL, they're looking for something that they don't have to quickly pull it out. The other advantage is if you created a pet-friendly shelter here, it could last a little bit past the storm versus when it's in a school, they instantaneously have to remove everything that made it as pet-friendly. And I know a lot of our employees have participated in that, and then when the storm rolls past there, this mad dash rush to return the school back to what it looked like beforehand, that could be handled out here. I know that when I spoke to friends that have horses, that basically either have to, you know, release them, or as you had mentioned, they either with a magic marker write the identification directly on the horse, or shave a phone number into the horse's fur, and just let the horses just fend for themselves during storms, whereas here, they could stay in a secured facility. All of those things on top of everything else you mentioned, if anything, I think it becomes mind-numbing with all of the possibilities. So with that, I, the last thing we'd say before we move on, and thank you for the presentation, is that the reason there is an additional ask for some additional 40 acres potentially, is that when we peeled some of the original acreage away for the school, which I think creates excellent synergy, because it's a vocational school, and a lot of what you're doing with the Agplex is vocational, that's a beautiful marriage. The thing that when you had said to me originally, hey, we need more space, I was a little concerned, but your answer, which I think was excellent, is you've already spent thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to design-
Couple hundred thousand.
Couple hundred thousand dollars to design a footprint that now with that extra space, you literally could leave it the same and slide it over. Otherwise, you got to basically start from scratch.
We do, and we'd have to decide what we're going to cut out of our plan, and that's the thing that breaks all of our hearts, is something would have to either be removed or downsized of these very, I think all of the uses I talked about are something that is going to be here for generations for the community to use.
Okay. So I think you've informed my colleagues and myself and our staff to what is the next step, and so we appreciate that presentation very much.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Any questions for the fair? Seeing none at this time. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. Okay. We're going to take an item that we had heard at our last meeting. It is public hearing number one, a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 23-05, 6900 Southeast Ridgeway Terrace. It'll be presented by Mr. Clyde Doolan and Ms. Elise Elder.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Clyde Doolan. This is a legis, this is a legislative public hearing that was continued from September 12. It concerns a 0.65-acre parcel of land at the corner of Ridgeway and US Highway 1. The first public hearing was held before the local planning agency. The local planning agency voted 4-0 to recommend approval of this proposed change. The applicant is seeking a change from the mobile home future land use designation to the general commercial future land use designation. Staff's recommending approval. Advertisements were done in preparation for the September 12 meeting, and it was continued to this meeting, so no additional advertisement was necessary. This is the location map showing the parcel. This is Publix to the south. This is a dealership to the north that deals in recreational vehicles. And this is the existing future land use that's assigned, mobile home future land use on the property. As you can see, there's general commercial to the north, general commercial to the south, general commercial to the west side of US 1, and this medium-density residential, you see where my cursor is, is in a preserve area as part of a subdivision approved. This is the proposed future land use, general commercial on the subject site. As I said, staff recommends approval. This is a legislative public hearing. It is the, the adoption public hearing of the, for the proposed amendment, and with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Seeing none.
Good morning. Mike McCarty, McCarty &amp; Associates Land Planning and Design, representing the applicant. Address 309 Southeast Osceola Street, Stewart, Florida. A pleasure to be here. Appreciate the opportunity. As staff indicated, we submitted this future land use application. We've demonstrated compliance with the requirements of the future land use amendment process. Staff has reviewed our application and our justifications, our traffic, and many other requirements, and deemed that we are in compliance, and they have recommended approval. We were before the LPA, and they recommended approval as well. We were before you on the 12th, where there was some concern. I believe we've addressed those concerns. Notices were sent out to adjacent property owners. The appropriate signage was posted on the property in those affidavits I've submitted previously on the record. 188 notices were, in fact, sent out. Of those 188, I had two phone calls with individuals that received the notice. It was more informative, explaining to them the nature of the application and the intent. They had no issue. I then did have one call with a Tom Quint, who lives, lives three lots down on Ridgeway, three lots to the east, if you will, on Ridgeway. Mr. Quint was adamant about the land being used for mobile homes. Come to find out, Mr. Quint was a bidder at the auction when this property was auctioned, and was not the high bidder, but was an active bidder trying to acquire the property. The fact is, is that mobile home is not appropriate for this parcel. You have Publix to the north. You have Broward Motorsports to the south. This is a, a corner at US Highway 1 and Ridgeway. The site was previously used for a fire station, so there's an existing structure and improvements on, on the property. My client acquired this property and intends to reuse the existing structure at this point in time. Going green, let's reuse the structure, right? And in fact, the tenant that they are working with to place in that building is Worldwide Clean Water. And Worldwide Clean Water is a green industry. They provide filtration systems for water, and they are active in the fight for clean water and filtering PFOs from, from the groundwater and such and other contaminants. So what we're doing here is we are doing something good for the community. We are reusing an existing building and facility, and we are putting a green industry business in this building, very low impact in comparison to the previous fire station. So with that, I respectfully request approval of the land use amendment. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this point in time.
Mr. McCarty, thank you very much. Questions for the applicant's representative? Seeing none at this time, I have several request to speak forms. As I mentioned, you'll have three minutes to address us on this topic, and so we'll just call them, there's not so many, I'll just call, yes, sir?
If I may, sir, I also have my team here, I apologize for that interruption. Also have my team here. I have Jared Gaylord, our legal counsel. Also have ownership here, and as well as some other individuals. Jared, would you like to make any additional comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't need to make any additional comments at this time. If I could just reserve any rebuttal time, I don't know the procedure for that, but if I could reserve some time to address some of the neighbors' concerns, that would be appreciated.
Play it by ear. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our first request to speak form is Ms. Doris Smith. Ms. Smith, good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Doris Smith, and I live on Swan Avenue, around the corner from Ridgeway. And in fact, I was the first person, I worked, I managed the clubhouse office for 10 years, and I received a call from the county telling us about this pending sale of the property. And I was advised personally that we have our sign, this is, this is the main entrance to Ridgeway, which is a community of almost 900 lots. So there's well more than 800 people here. And this is the main entrance to our community, which has been there since the 60s. And until 10 years ago, it was a 55-plus mandatory HOA. Well, in a court case, we lost that. However, we have a lot of elderly, and we have a lot of children in there now. And this is, as I say, the main entrance off of US 1. The other main- The other main exit is onto A1A, the Dixie Highway. And so it's, it states where we are, and, but I was advised that we would be granted a permanent easement to keep our sign there. But I was also contacted by the lawyer, and it might have been this gentleman, Mr. Gaylord, that, asking us if we would remove the sign. And, you know, of course, where would we put it? We have no way to identify our neighborhood. And, you know, I'll, and I know that the person who bid on the property was looking at it for, to make it a residence. Thought it would be a really cool house to live in, you know? Not necessarily being a mobile home there, but, you know, but it's, it's a big concern. And already, I've personally seen vehicles, I was driving down Ridgway Terrace going to US 1, and I thought the road was blocked. There was this giant trailer moving into that property, all lit up, and it was blocking the entire street. I mean, I was alarmed. I didn't, I didn't know what it was. And so already, there's a lot of traffic there, and it's just a concern. There's kids playing in the street, and we just hate to see our, our neighborhood just eliminated, you know? You know, who's Ridgway? Nobody would even know. And so that sign has absolutely got to stay there no matter what. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Our next request-to-speak form is Matthew Hendrickson.
Mine, I'd like to give my time to the next-
Well, you can forfeit your time, which is fine. Everyone gets three minutes who can bundle it, but thank you, I understand. Our next request form is Ms. Patty Allen. You okay? Our next request-to-speak form is Ms. Peggy Legat, Legold. Ma'am, good morning and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I also share the job in the office. I worked in the summers when Doris was a snowbird. I also have served on the Board of Directors for about 10 years now. And I'm concerned, first of all, that the lawyer said that 188 notices were sent out. I don't know of anybody in the community who received one of those notices. There was a notice sent to the clubhouse, and I think that the, the county may be under the impression that this is still an HOA, and that everything that's sent to that clubhouse goes out to all the residents. But it in fact doesn't, because it's no longer an HOA. It is strictly a social and recreational club, and attendance and participation in it is totally voluntary. So we have like 200 members, and there are over 800 people living in this community. Also, this community has been here for a very long time. Our sign was there before the firehouse. And as I said, we have switched since it's, there's no longer 55-plus, we have kids. It's a very dangerous situation there to have it already, the traffic has increased. It used to be that you could only turn right there, now they're turning left and right. The residents are already complaining that they're, have all the trucks coming and going from Publix and the noise at night, so they are really being put out. So anyway, this is not a good fit for our community at all, and I don't believe that we received proper notice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next request-to-speak form is Mr. Tom Quint. Mr. Quint, good morning and welcome.
Tom Quint, 6940 Southeast Ridgway. You had postponed this vote, whatever, for two weeks to allow their attorney and stuff to reach out to me. He spoke to me outside and said, "Can I get your name, your phone number, everything?" They did not respond at all. I didn't get a phone call, no mail, no nothing. All right, so whatever you guys recommended to them, they didn't take that advice. All right, I did some research. The people that sold you the land back in 1987, of these people here are sitting here, we sold you the land for $10 in 1987 as a goodwill gesture, and sold it to the county in 1987. 36 years later, you guys are done with the land, you sell it for 1.1 million. So just let you know that, okay? There is, like she said, it was a tractor trailer. They already are using it for commercial use, already. They've been doing it behind your back the whole time. They're parking tractor trailers, they're right. The water company trailers are in there, she is right. They blocked the road off for 15 minutes trying to back a trailer in there. That's our main entrance, 15 minutes. One medical emergency, that, that ambulance has been sitting there for 15 minutes to go by and get somebody for a heart attack. Don't allow us, I'm telling you. You keep our roads safe, I'm begging you, Commissioner Jenkins, here's your resident speaking. We know the area, we've been there since 1965, okay? She was saying that the county did, you know, the, the lawyers told you that they bought it as-is. The lawyer even told you that he recommended to them and told them what the land was, use was. I was a bidder. I was gonna buy it and live in it. I bid up to $200,000 to live in that house. And the staff has told you, there's, they bought it as-is. They're giving you all the information to make your vote. They bought it, knowing that they couldn't change it. When I went to the, the meeting, Elliot Paul, who did the auction, kept saying, time after time and time, "Make sure you know what you're buying, because this can't be zoned any other way. Make sure you know." Okay, so I don't know what other information you guys need, but we're begging you as residents, there's kids within 100 feet of that place playing in the street. They blocked the road off already, they already use this commercial. Go on the internet right now, and you'll find out. They have it listed as a commercial building for lease. They're right, they're already reaching out to, to prospective buyers, because they already have it listed as commercial, which is false advertisement. It's not commercial. You guys need to put a stop to this right now, tell them to get their trailers off that property, and quit using it as residential before somebody gets hurt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Our next request-to-speak form is Mr. Michael Dooley. Mr. Dooley, good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Michael Dooley, and I'm here speaking in support of this land use change. I understand that, in fact, the commissioners may have my talking points. I am telling you right now that I have revised them from what you might have to condense the time. So everything that I'm saying to you is gonna be in the points that you have, but I've reduced some of my comments. A little history. Ridgway was first created in 1965. Martin County did not have a zoning code until 1967. Prior to our comp plan, our commercial uses were typically designated as R3A, B1, 2, and 3. I state all this to help lay the foundation as to why this property should be changed to GC land use. If one was to look at the plat of Ridgway, it's interesting to note that the parcel we are discussing originally shows no number. Now has an identifier of 1B. Then the lot next to it starts Lot 1. Why? I believe it was the intent of the creators of Ridgway to always set aside the properties along the highway for commercial uses. Why else would that parcel be three times larger than the parcels to the east? If the intent was to have residential lots on this parcel, the developer would have numbered three more residential lots on the original plat. The original plat shows a dotted line east of this corner parcel, along with the parcel to the north and the parcel to the south, both of which are now GC. I submit that when the comp plan was created, there was a Scrivener's error. It would not be the first time that there was an error in the coloring of the plan. I've personally had to address Scrivener errors in the past. It makes perfect sense to change this property from mobile home to general commercial. The historical trend along US 1 and Hobbs Sound dictates it. Why? For the most part, the land use along US 1 and commercial at any corner is general commercial. I watched the video of the last meeting when this agenda was brought forward. I want to address the one comment concerning traffic. If in fact there's a true concern of increased traffic, I would suggest the last thing we would want is a residential unit on this corner. Imagine a young family living there with young children. Do we really want children living at the corner of Ridgway and US 1? I think not. For the reasons above, I ask you to please vote in favor of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next request-to-speak form is Karen Chikino, Chikano. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. How about our next request-to-speak form is Pat Prattkey. Ms. Claudia LaTrow. LaRue, I apologize, I was trying. And finally, Ms. Rhonda Blackard. Anyone else looking to address us? Seeing none, we'll have the applicant come for a final comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just want to add a couple clarification statements, if I may. I did meet with Mr. Tom Quint following the meeting, and it was here, yes, it was after the meeting, in discussion with him as to what he expected to see, or how we might be able to find some common ground on this piece of land. He was very adamant and said, "Nope, it needs to stay mobile homes." So there was really no common ground to be found there. Mobile homes are not appropriate on this parcel. Commercial is appropriate. Ridgway will benefit from the, you know, tenants and users on this property. So I did take his phone number, he also has my phone number. We couldn't find any common ground, so we're at an impasse. So that's why we are where we are. Do you have anything to add?
Sure thing. Good morning, commissioners. Jared Gaylord again. I just wanted to introduce the applicant. It's the Grace family. They're from, they originally did own property in South Martin County for residential purposes. Now, they own a lot of property for investment purposes. It's also worth noting that one of their limited partnerships, Worldwide Fabrics, was also instrumental in the Loxolusi project. It was, they worked with the Nature Conservancy to sell that property to put it into conservation. So over 110 acres along the Bridge Road corridor is now not fit for development, thanks in part to the Grace family. This morning, I do have two letters of support from local business owners I would like to place into the record, from Eric Wessel and also Eric McLeod. I would also like to place into the record some of the marketing material, which goes to some of the information that Mr. Quint had stated, that this property could never be used for anything other than a mobile home use. The marketing material itself says, "We assume the changes to the zoning to general or highway commercial per the property contact." It goes on that the subject consists of a freestanding commercial building, and is in overall good condition for its age, and is well-maintained for the use. Furthermore, it states, "We assume the subject will be rezoned to general or highway commercial, which permits apartments, hotels, hospitals, offices, financial institutions, general retail, storage facilities, restaurants, and automotive services." And then in, in summation, in conclusion, "It is our opinion that the highest and best use of the subject as vacant is developed for a retail use property." This makes sense to me.
Mr. Gaylord, whose information is that?
This is from the Martin County Board of County Commissioners Auction Information Packet, from Elliot Paul. That was what was used to market this property. I understand that my client bought it as an auction property and understood that they needed to rezone it, but it was marketed as something that should be rezoned. And that makes sense, given the adjacent uses, right? We have a, we have a Broward Motorsports to the north, and we have a Publix to the south. This is fronting on Federal Highway, one of the highest traffic corridors in the county. It makes sense that this should be a commercial use, whether that's community commercial or general commercial. That's, that makes sense to me. One other comment that I did want to address, which was about the sign, in, in communications with the county and staff during the, the purchase, there were two encroachments, one of which was the Ridgway sign, which does encroach into the county's right-of-way, and also onto our property. There were communications on whether we could work out an easement. My client has not moved that sign to date, and we are willing to either grant an easement or somehow move the sign so that it does not, it's not removed from the property. So we're happy to work with the Ridgway concerned residents on that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Elder.
Good morning. Elise Elder, Deputy County Attorney. For the record, the document that Mr. Gaylord was reading from was the appraisal that was done on the property when the county was selling it. It was done by an independent appraisal company. I actually spoke to the owner of the company, or the person who wrote the appraisal, and that was an assumption they made, not anything that the county indicated. So I just wanted to clarify that, that that was an independent appraisal.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Elise, 'cause I'm always careful where we are, we're in land use, right? We're not in zoning?
Correct.
Can we, at this junction, and I'm not sure that it has anything to do with land use, but can we talk about the signage at this moment, or does that happen?
So you mean the, the Ridgway signage? So this is private property that is owned by someone, not the association, so you can talk about-
In the context of, it won't, if, if there's, if the land use change isn't to occur, if that didn't happen today-
Correct.
-there wouldn't be a zoning discussion.
Correct.
Right? Because one would follow the other.
Correct.
So the reason why I'm asking is because I'm curious, and, and how far I can go talking about the sign relative to land use, which it really has nothing to do with land use-
Correct.
-other than if we don't discuss it, at this point, it doesn't get talked about in the zoning conversation, because there wouldn't be one if it didn't move forward.
Right.
If it does move forward, then perhaps during zoning, we could talk about it.
So it's a legislative public hearing, so you, it's based on policy decisions? So if you tie it into a policy decision, whether or not you want to change the future land use designation, it would be okay? Whether or not you change the future land use designation or not, the property owner can require them to remove the sign, either way. So it doesn't matter, but in that context?
So tell me when I should stop?
Okay, perfect.
Looking at the aerial and looking at our right-of-way maps, the sign looks to be about 60% in our right-of-way, and maybe 40% in the property of the owner. Just, and Clyde, you can bring it up if, if you wish. I, I think regardless of where we end up in the conversation today, we had an instance like this up in my district years ago with a neighborhood, that it was a purchased property that the homeowners association signed, it sat in the purchased property for decades. And an agreement was worked out. Can you keep going closer, closer, closer? Okay, there you go, perfect. So I don't know if my 60/40 rule is right, it looks a little bit, almost 50%, maybe 60. I was even better putting it in blue. So one thing I would hope, regardless of where we end up, is that the owners could either give an easement. I, I, clearly, the county must not have an issue with it being in our right-of-way, it's been there for 50 years, plus or minus probably. I, we, I don't think we've ever asked them to move it in those 50 years, and probably can't imagine that we'd ask them to do so now. I think trying to move it, relocate it out of the parcel would just be more expensive and more problematic than not, and I would hope that the owners of the property could find a way to work with Ridgway to keep the sign where it's at, because why not? And, and again, the sign in the neighborhood up in Jensen is still there in, on the private property, and as much as it was a little bit of a contentious issue with the new building that got built, I think calmer heads kind of prevailed over the idea that it wasn't worth that big of a fight over where the sign was located. So if I didn't break any rules, Elise, that was my-
That was probably enough. Thank you.
General comment on the edge of-
Yeah.
-going over the edge. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, and my role as the, as a county commissioner, my first priority is to protect existing residents. In this case, it's over 900 parcels that have been land used that way and occupied for over 55 years, and also to uphold the law. And the land has been land used, mobile home park, the entire time. I think that these people had the expectation that that would remain. The property, when it was surplus, was surplus with the existing land use. The owner should have expected that that was going to be the land use that he or she was going to have to work with. So I make a motion to deny.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
this is not appropriate for a mobile- a mobile home park, three on US-1. We get that. So, it has inappropriate zoning on it now. We sold that property for over $1 million. What is that, three, could you subdivide that into maybe three lots there? What's a Ridgway lot go for? $50,000, that's 150 grand? We did our due diligence prior to surplusing this property by having an appraisal. The appraisal states in it, as plain as your face, that it's going to be rezoned in some form of commercial form. We made the decision to surplus that property. I would assume some of the basis of that decision was the appraisal. I don't want to go against these good people, but at the same time, I don't want to be back in this conference room having a settlement agreement, which we seem to be pretty good at. So, I get it all. And the Ridgway sign, absolutely. The owner, I'm sure, I somewhat know the owner and his group, and they'll work that out, and maybe we can make that part of a motion, but I just, how can you leave it? It's already an inappropriate zoning, completely. So, in my mind, we don't have a choice. It's, so I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Smith?
And I also hope for the public's understanding of what we are required to do when we make these decisions. Elise is wincing over every time we talk. Land use is first. The issues relative to even the signage, and that's why I kept asking for, begging for forgiveness of what I was talking about. The zoning conversation would, if a motion passes, comes next, and the constraints and the restrictions relative to what happens with zoning is where that conversation happens, not land use. The question, and Clyde can do a much better job than I will, or Elise can do a much better job than I will, at why do we do land use first? How do we make the decision? What are the, what is the basis of making a decision for land use? Not to be confused with zoning, because the two really are very separate issues. The land use is a category of use. The restrictions by what you can do with that property are in the zoning conversation, and we are not allowed by law to go into the zoning discussion as part of the land use. Is that correct?
You got it.
But you can expand upon that if you will. I just, I want the public to fully, hopefully, understand the constraints that we have, that we work with on these decisions. They're two separate, different decisions. One can't be based on the other, as much as we would love to talk about it at this point, because you'd love to think, as the public or anybody watching this, why don't they limit what can happen before anything happens? Because then we have the certainty of what could happen. Unfortunately, under state law, that's not the rules we get to operate under. So, how do we get to a land use opinion? Or how does a staff, how does our staff get to a recommendation of a land use change? And what is the basis of that that we have to vote on?
I'll be happy to try and expand on that, Commissioner. Florida statute, Chapter 163, set forth in the 1980s, a program for all of the 67 counties and the cities of the state of Florida to plan for the future. And that required creating comprehensive plan, and that required creating a future land use map as an exhibit to that comprehensive plan. And that lays out, in general terms, residential shall be here, industrial shall be there, et cetera, et cetera, around the map. It did not get into, and is not intended to get down into, the nitty-gritty specifics of your setbacks and so on like that. And that's why you have a land use map with about 19 different categories, and then the statutes require that the specifics are dealt with in the land development regulations, and attached into, and a part of those land development regulations is the zoning atlas. And the proposed change to the zoning atlas is the next scheduled public hearing here today. And in those land development regulations, you get into the specifics of how much building coverage you can have, how much minimum open space you have on each lot, what's the minimum lot size on each lot, what are the setbacks on each lot, et cetera, et cetera. And you can also create multiple zoning districts for each future land use designation.
The but, though, with what you just said, none of that is a determination or a determining factor in whether or not staff's analysis of the adjacent land uses, of the adjacent categories, has anything to do with, those are the follow-on issues. But the land use decision cannot be made based upon, I think it ought to be three stories, I think it ought to be two stories, I think it ought to be 50-foot setback versus 20. That's not how you get there, correct?
Correct. There's different criteria for a future land use map amendment to evaluate that. And if you look at Mr. Doolan's staff report, it in details goes through, goes through the different criteria that need to be evaluated for a future land use map amendment. And the staff goes through those criteria in detail and lists it in their staff report and comes up with a recommendation of approval. If that criteria is not met, then Mr. Doolan would not recommend approval. And in this case, Mr. Doolan or Ms. Carolyn actually went through the process and recommended approval. So, you can see that in the staff report.
So, that was going to be my next question. Not that you didn't open up your presentation, but staff's recommendation is?
Approval.
Approval for?
General commercial.
And the LPAs was?
Recommended for an approval.
And for all of that, and I agree with Harold's comments to the residents, and I appreciate you showing up, I appreciate you commenting, and I fully understand the perspective. But on the land use side of this, I will second Harold's motion, and hopefully, we will deal with some other issues if it is to move forward relative to how we can further protect the residents from what might occur.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I'll just say in brief, part of that description, the way you just laid out, the legal process, is the purpose why, two weeks ago, I said, whoa, stop, tap the brakes, you know, because I didn't feel it was appropriate to ask the questions that I wanted answered in a particular type of hearing. And I certainly didn't want to get us into a lawsuit. So, this one, this one's a hard one. It's a, like, there, it certainly makes sense to have general commercial and not have a mobile home designation on US-1, but it's still, it's still hard to tolerate, and I certainly understand where the residents sit. And if it does move forward, then I have a lot of questions on the next step.
Thank you. Given the two weeks in between the first time this had come to our attention and today, I've done some research and thought quite a bit about it. I'll be honest, that when this original agenda item was on in our agenda packet, it would have been like, sort of, business as usual, approved by staff, approved by the LPA, a relatively small piece of property on US-1. I didn't think much would have turned it into what it has, but it's just another example of how unique this position as a commissioner is. Heard what Mr. Quint had said last meeting, appreciated that he hung in there the entire day. We went through the process. I did speak to the applicant's representative afterwards and said, look, you know, normally in situations like this, we'll try to work it out with the neighbors. I agree with, you know, there's passion here, no doubt. There's a couple of things that sort of tip it for me, and last time I was, I had voted no, because I didn't have all of the details that have come to light since. But with that in mind, the first thing, and Commissioner Smith sort of danced on the edge where he felt was appropriate, but when one of the residents mentioned the signage of the neighborhood, sort of, this is where we live, I immediately wrote down in my notes, a sign. Now, I don't know if we can get into the details now or later or whatever, but I understand, you know, your concern and agree. The notices, the notices are something that's always very important. It's a legal requirement so that a developer or anyone looking to do anything, sometimes it could be a next-door neighbor looking to do something much simpler. The yellow signs are an indication of something's happening, but a lot of people don't know that. The notices, the reason I believe, and Mr. McCarty can explain, that it was 188 and not more than that, even though the neighborhood is larger, it's meant for a sort of a circle, a circumference of how far or close you are to it. So, it might be on one side of the street and not on the other, depending on how many feet the notices are required. I'm sure, you know, look, there was a concern about the fact that maybe the notices weren't sent. That would be a terrible thing. It's much easier to send the notices than to get caught not sending the notices. I mean, we can, they were submitted at the last.
Commissioner Campi, I just looked in the file, and we do have an affidavit from the, from the applicant's representative attesting that they did notify all property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property on July 1st.
So, I was just listening to folks that came here to discuss this with us and check those things off. Now, the other issue is traffic and blocking. That's not an issue that we would necessarily take up, as much as the sheriff would take up. I hear the concept of, you know, any truck. I work on a dead-end street in Palm City, and next door to us is a boat manufacturing repair shop, not a manufacturer, a repair shop. Big boats, big trailers, they park them on the street, and then quite often, if you're pulling down the street, it's also the street that Palm City Elementary School ends on. And there's a guy with the forklift trying to maneuver gigantic boats in and out and blocks the road. Not for that long of a period of time, but that being said, that's a sheriff issue, not a commissioner issue. And I thought even the other day, when this came up, there's a couple of things that sort of tweaked this for both the residents and the new owners. If you had asked me, and I've been up here for a while, if you had asked me what the underlying land use for a fire station would be, I would have told you institutional. I would never have guessed mobile home. So, that is, and I get the point for the residents, but if this road, federal highway, was, you know, some other kind of, much smaller kind of road, I could see that. But personally, I don't see having mobile homes right on US-1. US-1 is the busiest road through our entire county. And so, for me, and then also, there is a little bit of a twist to the story that one of the people that was originally having an issue with this was also one of the bidders on the property, which I didn't comprehend at our last meeting. I think, from my perspective, the reason we moved our firefighters off of that location is that had basically served its functional usefulness, had basically run down to a point where if I lived behind it, east of it in Ridgway, I would welcome the opportunity for someone to come in there and breathe some new life into it. When I did have a conversation with the applicant's representative, I said, you know, I would be presenting to the neighbors our landscaping plan, our rehabilitation plan for what this building would look like. Obviously, the sign recognizing and acknowledging the hundreds of homes that are behind it, in my opinion, will of course stay. If anything, it should be enhanced. And if most of it, as Commissioner Smith astutely pointed out, a majority of it's on our property. So, as far as I'm concerned, as one of five, there will be signage for your neighborhood. But putting all that together, I don't see that running three additional mobile homes right onto the edge of US-1 is a smart strategy. The other thing that was brought to our attention today for the first time is that marketing material, and I hear my attorney, who represents us, say that that was presented by the, by the, what, the auction company put that out?
I'm not sure who put it out. It was the, the county got an independent appraisal by an independent company.
Well, I don't think an appraisal company does marketing material, that's got to have been the auction.
No, that was the actual appraisal. It was the actual appraisal, because I read the appraisal and I actually spoke to the appraisal.
Okay, but I'm talking about the marketing material.
Right, but that's what he was reading from.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. When we talked about let the buyer beware and due diligence, if I see an appraisal documentation that's stapled to the notification or the adverse advertisement for the auction, that's, to me, sounds like someone doing some homework. And if we did not appreciate or agree with what that appraisal information said, for me, the weirdest part is, we were the seller. When I say we, I mean collectively the county. This is not, we're not outsiders in this, looking at two different issues and we're trying to arbitrate between two separate parties. Collectively, we're one of the parties. And so, if I was the person that was thinking about purchasing that property for nearly $1 million, and then when you put on all of the extra response, you know, expenses and things like that, over $1 million, it's not like they, it didn't say that. It's, you know, in the appraisal gives information that that, that it had options. It wasn't like you're buying this and it can be nothing more than what it is. Now, I think there's a lesson to be learned for us, and I think that, to Commissioner Hurd's point, and I'll let her have a say next, is, yeah, the existing neighbors are a priority in my thinking. That fire station, and if it's a water treatment, the green aspect of the water treatment, I get that's very nice, but if they're looking to keep the building as it is, I think there could potentially be an enhancement for the residents, that if this building is renovated and the landscaping is redone and the signage for the neighborhood is enhanced to make them to even more of a, you know, of a call-out for where people live. I think that even though today it might not seem that way for the folks that live down there, in the long run, this is a better option, in my opinion. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, maintaining a mobile home on this parcel is just merely upholding the law for the people who live in Ridgway and have lived there for over 55 years. And also, Commissioners, I know that when we consider surplusing county properties, that we usually are given some evaluation of the history of this parcel. If we had, if I had known that the Ridgway development sold this parcel to the county in order to build a fire station in 1989 for $10, my response would have been very different, very different. I think that's, that's a consideration that unfortunately, we were not made aware of.
Two points. One, I don't disagree with your second point about if we knew it was a $10 piece of property that, you know, that it was ours for decades, that it would have been that situation. However, that ship has sailed. And secondly, in terms of your, with all due respect to my colleague, who I value her opinion, the concept that it's the law, that it's mobile home, the five of us, it's not like this, the Ten Commandments up here, we change zoning back and forth, up and down, that's our responsibility. Staff makes a presentation and a determination, they have agreed that it can be changed and it fits into the parameters. And then the five Commissioners, so to make it sound like you are going to uphold the law and the four of us are going to, or potentially whatever number, are going to break it, that's not true. We are, had a request to have it changed, and that is our job to review that information. You know, so the concept that you disagree with how it's being changed, I understand. The concept that you are upholding the law makes it sound like those that would support the change are somehow breaking the law is not accurate. Commissioner Smith, and then let's wrap this up.
Just one final comment, I think relative to surplusing land, a lot of lessons have been learned on this. We are constantly challenged that we should remove from our inventory parcels that we're not using. not using if they're not needed, whatever. But as everyone can probably see with this, it's not fraught with unintended consequences sometimes, and...
The motion maker?
I just, I just, it should give us great pause when we get these agenda items coming forward again to surplus land. It may seem, oh, just go ahead and sell the piece of property, what difference does it make? It makes a lot of difference, especially to the Ridgeway owners in this case. But hopefully, in a next-gen item, if this passes, we can address some of that issue as well.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call the question. We have a motion by Commissioner Jenkins for staff's recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one, with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. And now, the next item is also related to this.
Are you going to do your closed captioning?
No, I want to get this over with just very quickly, thank you. Public hearing, quasi-judicial, number one, public hearing to consider adoption of an amendment to the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning classification for CPA 23-056900 Southeast Ridgeway Terrace. It'll be presented by Mr. Clyde Doolin, and I'm sure assisted by others. It's a quasi-judicial, so Commissioner Hurd, do you have any ex parte communications?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
I have, and they've been filed.
Commissioner Heatherington?
If any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Smith?
I do, and they're filed.
I have some, and they've been filed. Is anyone that's going to be offering testimony, please stand to be sworn in, not lawyers?
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Are there any, I guess the return receipts were submitted already?
Yes, since it's a continuation, they were submitted, I believe, at the LPA.
Thank you. And there's no intervenors?
No interveners.
Mr. Doolin, do you have a copy of your work history and a copy of the agenda item?
I do, it's been provided to the clerk.
Thank you very much. I think that's everything we needed. Mr. Doolin, you are recognized to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is 0.65 acre property. The existing zoning is an RT zoning district that dates back to 1967. The proposed zoning is general commercial, which implements the future land use designation that was just voted upon in the past in the last public hearing. There are two potential zoning districts that you can choose from that implement the general commercial future land use designation. One is community commercial, CC, the other is general commercial, GC. This is a permitted use schedule showing the two zoning districts that implement the general commercial future land use designation. The uses are on the left side, and the letter P indicates something that is, one, a use is permitted in a zoning district. As you can see, the CC and GC permit many of the same uses. Major difference would be, for instance, bed and breakfast is not permitted in the general commercial. I'm going to scroll down to, I scrolled past it. Vehicular use is a use that is permitted in general commercial, not permitted in community commercial. Also, restaurants with drive-throughs are permitted in general commercial, not in community commercial. Those are two very likely differences between the, those are two permitted uses that you might find on a parcel this small. Some of the other items, like large box extensive impact retail, would only be permitted in the general commercial, but that would be very unlikely, probably in a site this small. So I'll be happy to go through any of the permitted uses you'd like to discuss, but that's kind of an overview of the differences in permitted use. So for instance, restaurants are permitted in both, but restaurants with drive-through are only permitted in the GC. As you can see, trade and skilled services are only permitted in the GC, vehicular service, vehicular maintenance, but for instance, veterinary medical permitted in both. Moving on to some of the standards for the specific use, the development standards, the minimum lot size is the same for both, the minimum lot width, max hotel density, max building coverage. The CC is limited to 50%. The GC is allowed 60% building coverage. The height difference is 30 feet for the CC and 40 feet for the GC, and the minimum open space is less for the GC at 20% versus a 30% for the CC. Structure setbacks are the same across the board for both the CC and the GC. It is completely within your prerogative to make a choice on what is the most appropriate zoning district to implement this future land use designation. The applicant requested GC, the staff recommendation is for GC, however, you have that as your choice. And with that, I will end my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions for staff? Seeing none, applicant's representative.
Mike McCarty, McCarty and Associates Land Planning and Design, representing the applicant. Address 309 Southeast Osceola Street, Stewart, Florida. We agree with staff's presentation. We requested, request a general commercial zoning designation. It's appropriate to this property. It's consistent with the Publix to the north, which is very large, intense, commercial use, and it's also consistent with the Broward Motorsports to the south. We feel this is appropriate zoning designation, and we request your approval. If you have any questions, happy to answer them at this point in time.
Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, any members of the public looking to address us on this topic? Sir?
Tom, according to 6940 Southeast Ridgeway. I just wanted to know, you guys are just finding out that we sold you this land for $10. Was there any, it says in the warranty deed that I have, that I pulled up from the county records, there's restrictions, reservations, and easements included in this deal. Did anybody check to make sure that land wasn't supposed to be given back to Ridgeway? Did anybody check what the reservations, restrictions, easements were in the deal? If we sold you something for $10, don't you think somehow Ridgway would benefit somehow back when you guys are done with the land? You guys pocketed $1 million off us for $10. We're poor residents, we're living, we don't have much. All we're asking for is a little street to be left alone, and we can't get that? I think you guys need to check to make sure, this warranty deed, it says right here, Book 4, page 41, look it up, make sure you do your due diligence, because there could be a lawsuit like you guys are afraid of, could still come, because you guys didn't do your due diligence. Check this out, I'm telling you, we sold you that land for $10. Goodwill gesture, the residents, they have nothing to start with. And then you guys sell for $1 million, it's on record. I asked you last meeting to check with William Snyder, the sheriff, to see why the crime rate's going up. He said he'll be here an hour, I'll talk to him. What did he say?
I did speak to him. He obviously doesn't know every single street of the neighborhood. He said he would look into it, and he disagreed with some of your, some of your...
That commercial property doesn't bring in crime.
I didn't ask that specific question.
That's what I asked you, though.
I asked about your area.
All right, I'm just saying. I had no other...
Thank you.
...thing I could do. I mean, we basically lost. I mean, you guys made your decision. If something happens on the street, a little kid gets hit, killed, whatever, just remember, it's on camera and everything, okay? Just want you to know.
Yes, sir, you're next. Please state your name again for the record, please.
All right, Matthew Hendrickson. I live in Ridgway. I know there's a lot of concern with the street and the traffic. If I remember rightly, there is no actual entrance or exit onto US-1. Everything goes through a two-lane street on the side of the building. The fire trucks used to have the same problem going in and out of there. My concern is, is possibility, if they could put an exit entrance out onto US-1, it would alleviate a lot of the problem with the traffic. I've listened to the gentleman, what they're going to use it for. I believe there's going to be a lot of trailer trucks involved in his business. I don't know if they're going to manufacture their water purification stuff on-site and ship out of there, but I would like to see if it's possible to maybe put an exit entrance onto US-1 instead of onto the side street, and I think that would solve a lot of problems for a lot of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that's a good suggestion. Anyone else looking to speak to us on this topic? Seeing none? Aye. Yes, Ms. Elder?
Yes, Elise Elder, deputy county attorney. Just for the record, we don't have the, I don't know the history of the property originally being sold to the Board of County Commissioners, but if you look at warranty deeds frequently, the price of a particular piece of property is not included in the warranty deed, and a lot of times, they do put $10. And then the reservation language is also standard, because you'll have utility easements or sidewalk easements, so that also transfers with the property. I don't have the, I don't have the history of the sale, but just because the deed says that, does that mean that that actually transpired and it was sold for $10? Frequently, they don't put the price, and they'll put $10, because that's just the standard.
So, one second, please.
Okay, I'm just, I just wanted to give the board that information, so we don't have the history, but just because it says that doesn't mean it was sold for $10, is my point.
I appreciate that. Sir?
I can't address whether, what the consideration was for the county when they purchased it, but we did the transaction for when the Grace family purchased this property, and in our title search...
Closer to the microphone.
Excuse me, sorry. Jared Gaylord again, for the record. We did the transaction for when the Grace family purchased this property, and there was no restrictive covenant or anything like that in the record that stated that this shall only be used for county municipal services or as a fire station, and if not, then it will revert back to Ridgway. So that didn't exist in our title search, and also, I just looked at the deed, and the recitals are standard recitals, things of record, not any specific deed restrictions that it shall be only used for a fire station.
Thank you for addressing the issue that was rightfully brought up by a resident. Okay. Commissioner Heatherington?
I, I looked, I saw your table, Clyde. I just think that this particular location, giving, you know, very good point, it does not have an access onto US-1, can it access be made onto US-1 on this parcel?
So that would be a question for when a site plan came forward or a development application came forward. It's not something we're talking about today. This is really just the piece of property, what's permitted on the property, not the actual mechanics of the property.
It's just very close to Ridgway. I think it makes more sense to have community commercial on it, which would prohibit drive-throughs, and to me, that seems to be a little bit more of a compatible use there with the neighbors so close. So I would rather see it have a community commercial designation.
Commissioner Smith?
To the driveway idea question, we've had multiple parcels on US-1 that are not dissimilar to this kind of a parcel. We have one probably a mile north of here that the residents, maybe two miles, very much did not want their entrance road being used as an access point. Now, in that case, well, and even in this case, this case already has connections to Ridgway. In that case, it was an easement that was facilitated through the property since its inception. Nor would FDOT grant the parcel access, given its proximity to a collector or whatever Ridgway is, or an arterial, and the separation between its access and other access. It just becomes incredibly complicated. Again, that's all site planning, but if the building is to be reused or rehabbed in its existing condition facility, site planning wouldn't be an issue for us at this point until there was a demolition done or a proposed change of use or something that was going to be discussed. And that's a whole nother process that would have to go through that isn't part of whether it's the right zoning or not. The conversation I had with the applicant over this was another alternative that's not been offered, because the applicant hasn't asked for it, and I only throw it out there for consideration because of the conversation in terms of the issues relative to the site, to the neighborhood. There is a third option, and that's doing a PUD, and the applicant hasn't asked for a PUD and isn't proposing to do a PUD. But if we had a PUD, there would be a lot more we could put into the zoning requirements of a PUD that you won't get out of community commercial, or you wouldn't get out of general commercial. The signage issue, that'd be a starting point. I mean, you could certainly deal with the PUD agreement on the signage, and whether the applicant voluntarily wanted to do an easement or do some carve-out for the signage, that's a whole nother story. Setbacks and buffering from the adjacent residential unit that is the mobile home on its adjacent side, all sorts of things that we could negotiate in the PUD that could make it for intended or non-intended use in the future, we could significantly limit and control relative to that. That's just a thought, the applicant, I didn't get a yes or a no in our conversation, I probably got more of a no than I got a yes or even consideration, but I throw it out there because the situation I think we have with the neighborhood that makes it a very difficult thing to do. If that doesn't work, I am supportive of the community commercial. I think that puts a little bit more restriction in place than what the general commercial does, but for me, a PUD still would give us a lot more flexibility relative to how we could protect the site.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jenkins?
So quickly, just going through the use chart, can't build a hospital on CC, don't think we're... Outdoor amusements, probably not going to do that. Driving range, can't do that. Pain management, probably not going to do that. Drive-through, yes, absolutely. If I was a resident, that would be my biggest fear. So I get that. Vehicular sales and service, wholesale trades, and transportation services, that's the only difference between CC and GC. So I, I think that CC would be inappropriate. I completely agree with Commissioner Heatherington and Smith, so...
Okay.
Chairman, may I address the board?
One second, please.
Yes, sir.
This is quasi-judicial, we're going to go through the steps to make sure we're handling it appropriately. We've heard from staff, we asked staff questions, we heard from the applicant, we asked the applicant questions, we heard from the public. We've had a little debate. Now, we'll have final comments from either staff or the applicant. Mr. McCarty, it's your turn.
Thank you, sir. Mike McCarty, McCarty Land Planning, for the record. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. And yes, Commissioner Smith, you're 100% correct. FDOT would be, would be an issue as far as a direct access point onto US Highway 1, giving the proximity of Ridgway, you know, along that frontage, and the mere lack of frontage for this 0.65 acre parcel. So you are correct in that statement, sir, I agree with that. And yes, Mr. Smith, PUD could possibly be an option, and I thank you for forward-thinking and in that mindset of a solution. Respectfully, currently, what we are trying to do is utilize an existing structure, and the PUD is more appropriate if we had full intentions at redeveloping this site, which currently we do not. If in the event we do want to redevelop the site, fully agree, and if, and if we did pursue that, we would be before you in the form of a PUD. Now, we, I hear the board, I hear Ms. Heatherington and Mr. Jenkins with regard to the uses permitted in commercial general versus the community commercial. We recognize the residents in the immediate area and some of their concern, so therefore, I will make a gesture in good faith that, yes, we will accept a community commercial zoning designation as a common ground finding with you, the board, and with Ridgway residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Mike, the only, the only thing I would suggest, and I appreciate your comments, thank you. If community commercial is granted, the scale of this property... If community commercial is granted, the scale of this property, the size of this property probably would not come back to the board for a site plan approval if it met all the requirements of community commercial. It wouldn't reach the threshold of doing that. And there's nothing that allows us or has -- there's nothing in this approval of zoning that would give a conditional, any kind of a conditional agreement in straight zoning for you to come back with a PUD if a new site plan were to be brought forward. Right? At least, I mean, there's nothing--
Right. No, it wouldn't come back, probably.
No, but I mean, there's nothing that we can bind them through the approval of this zoning.
No, like to require them to--
Come back with a--
--bring an easement or--
No, to come back with a PUD if they were to change their site plan.
No.
So that's my -- it's not a hesitation. It's a little bit of a -- I would really rewind this clock in many ways and do things very differently if we were back at the beginning of all this. But I -- it's not that I disagree with what you said. It's just that there won't be any -- you won't have any requirement. Your owners won't have any requirement to come back to us for anything if you get your CC, in terms of a PUD. And even if they sold the property 10 years from now, it still would take with it CC, and a new project that came forward and said, gee, we watched your hearing 10 years ago, and that all sounded really nice, but we want to do X that is perfectly permissible and allowable if we follow the code and we follow the land development regulations in CC, there's still no requirement for that site plan to ever come back to us.
You're correct, and if that was my part that I misspoke, my intent was that if in the event we wanted to pursue a use that was not permitted in the zoning designation, the straight zoning designation, whether it be community commercial, let's say, that we would have to come back in the form of a PUD if we wanted to do a use that was not permitted within community commercial.
And that's--
Yep.
--fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
I'm just letting the public know, and in the conversation, this is the only place we get to talk about this. We don't get to -- we can meet with staff and talk about it, but the five of us don't get to meet and talk and have that conversation. So I just want the board to know, from my perspective, what the conversation I had with the applicants were relative to what I thought we could put more controls in place if we wanted to.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doolan, anything from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. We've heard from everybody. It's back to the board. It's a legal process. I want to be very careful to follow the steps properly and not take anything out of order. So you had an opportunity to address this, and you did.
Something that came up--
I'm sorry. That was your chance. I can't because then -- I understand that, but that's just the way that the system is. I didn't design it. I'm just following it along as the chairman. I want to make sure that neither side is put in a position to have some kind of legal advantage. That's why we're trying to follow the system exactly the way that it exists. And there's been two. Most often, an agenda item doesn't get two separate meeting date hearings, so this has been thoroughly vetted. Still, back to the board. Commissioner Jenkins.
So I will move approval of CC with the comment that we would encourage the owner to work with the Ridgway community to make sure that sign that's been there for 50 years remains, or enhanced, and enhanced, and enhanced, yeah.
But for clarification, that doesn't impact the motion, correct?
I guess that was just comment.
Thank you.
Why? Because it can't?
Correct. You can't contingent the zoning on granting a different property owner a right.
Highly recommend it.
So it would just be based on this application on this property.
Got it?
I said encouraged.
We have a motion now.
I will -- I'll support the community commercial.
That's what I did.
Yes, so she's seconding your motion. Okay. It's been an interesting agenda item over the last two meetings. I would also strongly encourage that the new owners of this property be as neighborly as possible. It behooves you. We have -- many of us have been up here a long time. It -- I shouldn't be the one to tell that when you get along as neighbors, it makes everyone's lives easier. I personally envisioned this very old and sort of antiquated facility that the county used as a fire rescue station for a long, long time, having some new life breathed into it with landscaping and rehabilitation of the site. I am a strong believer that the residents deserve that recognition of their signage that has been there. As Commissioner Smith mentioned, a majority of it seems to be on our property, and that that would be the first step to show the existing residents that you're going to be neighborly. I see some head shaking, so I think that it's not like some magical recipe. Getting along with your neighbors is benefits everyone. And with that, I think that the CC, eliminating some of the more aggressive of the uses, especially for such a small piece of property, is the right thing to do. So with that in mind, we have a motion by Commissioner Jenkins for CC, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. Thank you very much. We're going to take our closed captioning break now, and we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, we are back from our mid-morning closed captioning break to continue our September 26, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. We're going to now take Agenda Item Public Hearing Number Two, public hearing to consider an adoption of an ordinance amending Article One, General Chapter 79, Fire Prevention and Protection General Ordinance's Martin County Code to require fire safety inspections and assessment of yearly inspection fees. It'll be presented this morning by our -- Mr. -- I was going to say that. Fire Marshal, Mr. Doug Colain.
That's Fire Marshal. That's quite a tile. Thank you, sir. Good day, Commissioners. For the record, Doug Colain, Fire Marshal, Martin County Fire Rescue. Today, I am here to request an amendment to an existing county ordinance, Number 79, which references annual life safety inspections. The Florida Administrative Code directs the local fire marshal to conduct these inspections and authorizes the agency to collect fees for these inspections. The only amendment I'm requesting for this ordinance is when we actually collect those fees. I would request that the board authorize the fire marshal to collect these fees by September 30th of each year for the coming year. The Fire Prevention Division would then ensure that each business receive their annual life safety inspection during the following -- during the coming fiscal year. The process is being put forth to coincide with the process of the tax collector and the business tax receipt, since they are somewhat related. So just to clarify, there is no change in the fee schedule itself. Fees have not changed since 2009, when I have come to the county to work. We're just trying to do the schedule and when they're actually going to be collected. So there should be no financial impact, since it's only for when we collect those fees, and we're trying to streamline our business. All of our other fees are collected upfront, whether it's plan review, so on and so forth. So upon approval of this amendment, we will extend the initial payment deadline to December 31st of 2023. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your service. Questions for the fire marshal? Seeing none. Anyone in the public looking to address us on this topic? Seeing none. Just to reiterate, this is not any type of an increase. It's just a different timing for when the amount is due.
Correct.
As I remember from Mr. Colain, that it just streamlines and makes it a more efficient process because he and his department have to go collecting these delinquent fees, and this would free up his time and his staff's time to get back to the jobs that they're supposed to be doing and not doing, the clerical work.
Move approval.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for staff's recommendation by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Head back out there and keep our county safe. Thank you so much. Going to take something a little out of order as a favor. I am the benevolent one. DPQJ, number one, request for a variance to allow the issuance of a building permit on a legal lot of record that does not front an open road but has access via an easement. It'll be presented by Mr. Tom Walker. Since it's quasi-judicial, let me ask my colleagues. Commissioner Smith, do you have any--
They're filed.
Do you have any ex parte communication?
I do. They're filed.
Thank you. Commissioner Heatherington?
If any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Hurd?
I don't have any, and they've been filed.
I also don't have any, and that's been filed. Anyone that's going to be offering any testimony, please stand to be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Are there any intervenors?
No interveners.
Do you have a copy of your work history and the agenda items, sir?
I do, as well as the applicant has provided an affidavit of mailing, so I'd like to submit all of those for the record as Exhibit One.
Thank you very much. And with that, we can begin. Mr. Walker, you are recognized.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Walker, County Surveyor, for the record. Today, we do have a request for Kiheikey LLC for a variance to allow building permits on a parcel that does not front an open road. All right. And according to Section 4.843K-1C Land Development Regulations, the Board of County Commissioners may grant a variance that allows a building permit on a lot not fronting an open road, provided that the board determines the following. One, it is a legal lot of record. Two, the lot has legal access to an open front, an open road that is reasonable and practical in general conformity to the style and character of the neighborhood and established by recorded easement no more than a quarter-mile in length. And three, the variance does not create an undue burden on the county's provision of public safety or public services. Staff's analysis concluded that it meets these requirements, as the subject lot is a legal lot of record and is currently recorded in Official Records Book 1706, page 1362. It is shown in, outlined and read on the map currently displayed on the screen. The lot has reasonable and practical access to an open road, being southwest Warfield Boulevard approximately 1.4 miles northwest of southwest Tommy Clement Street, and is in general conformity with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Access to the lot is established by an easement that does not exceed a quarter-mile and is recorded in Official Records Book 125, page 376. And lastly, use of the access which is located where a public right-of-way was intended to exist for access purposes would not place an undue burden on the county's provision of public safety or services. The Board of County Commissioners has asked to be advised as to whether a parcel associated with the variance request is within the urban service district boundary, and if the parcel is located within Palmar or the Palm Beach Heights subdivisions. The subject parcel is not within the primary urban service district, nor is it near Palmar or the Palm Beach Heights subdivision. And staff's recommendation is, one, move that the board receive and file this agenda item summary and all of its attachments for the record as Exhibit One, and two, move that the board grant the variance and adopt the resolution to allow the issuance of building permits on certain parcel identified as Exhibit A. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for our staff? Seeing none. Applicants' representative.
Good morning, and thank you for taking this item up. Tyson Waters, on behalf of the applicant. We agree with staff's recommendation, and we're here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Brief. Questions for the applicant's representative? Seeing none. Any members of the public looking to address us on this topic? Also seeing none. Back to the board. Commissioner Smith.
Staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Very efficient agenda item. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept staff's recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Waters, thank you so much. Let's switch it back up to Ms. Donna Gordon. Board and committee appointments. The first one is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee appointments. Ms. Gordon, welcome.
Hello. Donna Gordon. Worked in administration for many, many years. Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I apologize. When I was talking to you prior, when you were handing me your voting sheets, I was in somewhat of an error. This committee has to have eight members, but no more than 11, and at least six categories, so that stresses my brain sometimes. So from your voting sheets, I'm -- Mr. Chester Edwards received five votes. Mr. Michael Dooley received four votes. Ms. Deborah Allen received three, and Mrs. Diana Parker Owens received two.
Move Mr. Edwards, Mr. Dooley, and Ms. Allen.
Second.
But not Ms. Parker Owens?
Ms. Parker Owens.
It's up to you. You don't have to.
Yeah.
Huh?
You don't have to appoint a fourth person.
Oh, because we have a maximum--
Yeah, you have to maintain eight, but no more than 11 members. And if you appoint Mrs. Diana Parker Owens, that would be 11.
How many did she have?
She had two.
It's up to the board.
I'm on that board. She's fantastic.
Yes.
Then I'll add Ms. Owens to the list.
Thank you so much. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith for the names as presented by Ms. Gordon, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
I--
This one, let me start out by saying there are very difficult agenda items, and one of the most difficult is when we have to sift through spectacular applications and resumes to select two out of one, two, three, four, five, six, out of 13 that want to participate in their community. And as I read the applications, I was saying, oh, this is the perfect person. And then you read the next one, you say, oh, wait, this is the perfect person, and again, and again, and again. This was the best group of applicants for something that I have ever seen. They have doctorates. They have been in the community forever. They have, you know, decades of library experience. It's just remarkable how many people want to participate in our library system. And with that, let's see who got picked.
There's three honorable mentions. Dr. Margaret Vallone Gardini--
Gardini.
She received one vote.
That was me.
Dr. Robert Hess Jr. received one vote. Mrs. Mary Hitchborn received one vote. Mrs. Janelle Corrin received three votes, and Dr. Tina White received four votes.
Move approval of Dr. White and--
Corrin.
--Mrs. Janelle Corrin.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, as the name's recommended by, well, presented by Ms. Donna Gordon, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Gordon, before you go, two suggestions. One, sometimes I recognize names, and then I review their applications to see if they are currently serving on another community board. Sometimes they are. And I think it would ease the burden of us having to pick one fantastic candidate over another if we had a policy where ideally you only served on one panel or board at a time or committee. And secondly, there might have to be a possibility of some type of a limit because, you know, when we don't know the names, I don't know about everybody else, but if you look at that last example, the two names that got the most votes and were able to continue were the incumbents. Because, you know, that is sort of a deciding factor. You'd say they're already on the board. Sometimes they're just getting ready to be elevated into a chairmanship position, which I wouldn't want to pull that away from someone who's been doing it for a while. That being said, I think that if, like in other boards, like not-for-profits, you sort of work your way through, you become vice chair, and then chair, and then, you know, immediate-- immediate past chair or president. And then maybe I think there needs to be a rotation off so that some of the new people that are here could have an opportunity to participate. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. This is a letter... This is a... Not that there is not some skill sets that are terrific, but if you look here, we have quite a few people that are serving very well and appreciate their efforts on behalf of the county. But that being said, some people have multiple appointments. Commissioner Smith?
I appreciate maybe the idea. I'm happy that, first of all, people want to participate, whether it's a single board or multiple boards. And if they have a talent and a skill set that's appropriate, I don't think I'd want to limit that. And the other one, I think it's okay the way we have it. If someone is doing a fantastic job on a board, and they're representing the county in a great way, that's all a good reason to leave them where they are. That's not to say that there aren't new people that come along that are fantastic. And if one of us or three of us decide that we see the merit in adding that kind of a discipline to a board because it's not there, fantastic. If not, I'm okay with where we are.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Well, Rex Santel being a prime example of that, does a fantastic job. Obviously, he's a vet. He's on the animal control board and, you know, the CRA. May I make a suggestion that at least in the future, when we have applicants for boards that are currently serving on other boards, that we have some way of knowing that so we can consider that as part of our consideration of appointing them to another board, right? Wouldn't that make sense?
It's on the application.
Oh, so you're telling me I should probably read it closer?
No. I...
That was a pleasant way of not setting that arrow.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And you could have left that alone. I did look, and I don't know if everyone fills it in.
I don't either, you know, because I...
I think that, you know, it says, are you other boards and things, and what kind of work, you know, what's your history in the county? But that being said, I don't know if they do it. I know that you verify districts. Maybe if you could just sort of put it in, you know, because I don't think... I... No, I mean, where if... Not using any of these specific examples, if someone has it, and they say, yeah, and they list one or two, but they were on four things. Sometimes people also list that says, you know, I have been, not that I am. You know, it's hard for us to know that who's serving on everything at the time if when... I don't know if it's too much additional work for you, but...
[laughing]
Well, the goal here is, I mean, if I... Take this down, by the way. Can you take this down?
They already have the list, so...
I know, so that it's not here now, so people... I mean, take it away. Thank you. So it doesn't look like I'm trying to use somebody as an example. Some people are on five things now. And if there's only... If they're not at a capacity, but if someone's serving on five boards and committees, which they deserve a medal for, and there are other people trying to get on one of those, I think you're serving your community pretty well if maybe you were on two max at one particular time. Or, for instance, the CRA and the NAC sort of go together. I get that as sort of a combination. And one other. But if you're on four or five boards or panels now, and we had 11 other people that were trying to get on one, I think that sometimes we're doing a disservice to other residents that might bring some additional... So I like Commissioner Jenkins' idea, but it's not guaranteed that they list them all, so if...
So you want me to list them? How far do you want to go back?
No, if they're current.
Current, okay.
Yeah, so which is not the end of the world.
As on some of the applications, has... Have you ever been?
Right, and I don't mind if they have in the past, and they're looking to be on something else. That's fine. I'm talking that currently, you know, and I... Look, it's a perfect combination of what Commissioner Smith said about, look, let people do what they do, and if they should be there, then we should be there. But Commissioner Jenkins' point that at least let us see that, you know, to... Because I think if a person is a superstar, let them be on as many boards as they want. However, I would like to consider that in fairness to the other applicants.
Okay.
But that's my opinion. There's four other people up here. Actually, it was Commissioner Jenkins' opinion that I tagged on to. Does the rest of the board feel that just listing them?
Sure. Fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. You've always done a remarkably good job.
Oh, thank you.
That was a big sigh just there.
I was just going to say, there's a little bit of a huff there. You all right?
Yeah.
Are we done?
With that, we are done. Let's stop. It's 12 o'clock.